All the December 3rd Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Like to welcome everybody tonight. Couple of housekeeping notes. Wayne Dias will not be able to be in our meeting today, so a few items. Buford will be our substitute schoolteacher for today, so he's last minute, but I think he's got everything together. Also, we do have two items, extensions, for all Batus Village subdivisions, items in Fairhope Falls that will come up under new business at the end of the meeting. We will do the approval of the minutes at the next meeting. So without further ado, the first item on the agenda is, what is the agenda item number?
SD 18.41, Village at Firethorn.
Okay, so that's not the one that changed then?
In your packet.
Okay, in the packet, okay. 1841, a request to Firethorn for a final plat approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and welcome to tonight's compatibility analysis discussion. And we will lead off, we will lead off with a final plat approval. And SD 18.41 Village at Firethorn, as Ms. Emily mentioned a moment ago, my apologies for a labeling in correction in your packet. To refresh the commission members' memory, this is one half mile east of State Highway 181, just beyond east of the Twin Beach Road where Twin Beach Road terminates. You'll see the property owners there on the slide, as this is a portion of that was added to the Firethorn development. What I'd like to do here is just briefly refresh the Planning Commission's members about the case history. So we began with a zoning change, which was a conditional annexation and rezoning to PUD. That was approved by the Fairhope City Council August 13th of this year. That case number, ZC 18.03, Zulu Charlie 18.03. The subdivision case that you saw preceding was SD 18.17. That was the preliminary plat of this Firethorn subdivision. This is called the Village at Firethorn, that this commission approved on May 7th of this year. A brief reintroduction of the property. 6.27 acres, 20 lots, resulting in 3.19 units per acre density. You'll see the largest and smallest lots shown there on your slide. The parent parcel number that created this, that originated this subdivision is at the bottom of the slide. What I'd like to call your attention to here on this slide, the drawing on the left is the plat of the subdivision. The drawing on the far right is zoomed out to show the entire Firethorn development. You'll notice in the lower right-hand corner of the large-scale drawing, the Village at Firethorn that we're considering tonight is shown in a very light beige color. The full site data table is in the center of the slide. If there's any questions going back to the approval of the subdivision we need to go into greater detail, we can utilize that site data table. Just a very brief rundown of the final plat criteria. The video inspections of the infrastructure were submitted satisfactory. The performance bond was submitted as requested. The commission will note that 228 linear feet of sidewalks were installed as a part of the subdivision construction. The remaining amounts you see on your slide there will be part of the performance bond, as well as the Willow Oak trees for the street trees. The maintenance bond was submitted. You see the bond number from the bonding company. The various inspection reports regarding the subgrade and granular base necessary to create the paving in the subdivision, as well as concrete, were all furnished and are satisfactory. And then finally, the power, the electrical provider for this subdivision is Baldwin EMC, which that was left energized as of November 16th of this year. So therefore, our staff recommendation is approval of this case, again, SD 18.41, which is the final plat approval. We have a few, you'll see listed right there, a few punch list items, which are conditions of approval. These are minor, routine punch list items, not uncommon for a subdivision of this type. Planning Commission members, I'm happy to answer questions about the case. And also, Mr. Steve Pumphrey with Dewberry is here as well to answer questions based upon the, to answer questions on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, Buford. Do we have any questions for staff while he's up? If not, this is a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing before I call. Well, I don't see Steve here. Is he, oh, there he is, behind the computer. Steve, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing just to see if there are any questions, and may or may not call you up. Public hearing open? Anybody have anything to say about this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time and turn this over to the directors. Director Steve is in the audience. If you have any questions for him. If not, I will accept a motion.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
I've got a motion to approve the staff recommendation and a second.
A second.
And a second. Is there any further discussion? In that case, solemn favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider the request of Mike Fogel to rezone property from R2 Medium Density Single Family Residential to B4 Business and Professional District. The land is out near the new roundabout, and I would like to say one thing just to the audience in general. On zoning items, the Planning and Zoning Commission simply makes a recommendation to the city council, and ultimately, the city council decides whether or not the zoning change will be made. The zoning is actually an ordinance, so we don't have the authority to make an ordinance one way or the other. So we will simply make a recommendation to the city council, who may or may not accept our recommendation. Nancy?
Thank you. This is a request for rezoning from R2 to B4. It is the acreage, there's two parcels involved. The acreage is 2.8 acres. Mr. Fogel contends, oh, it's at the southwest corner of intersection of County Road 13 and Fairhope Avenue. Mr. Fogel contends that the development of the gas station across the street and the roundabout provided burden for his, he and his family due to traffic issues and losses of that residential feel. This particular site, if you all have driven by it, has a large pond on the site. And it lies between two village nodes, Greeno and Fairhope Avenue intersection, and then Highway 181 and Fairhope Avenue, which are less than two miles apart. The subject property is not located at these locations. We realize that the subject property to the north is unzoned, so there is that potential for commercial to go in it right now. There's mostly residential, with the exception of the storage facility and the gas station. Let's see. The main concern about this is to change that zoning would create commercial, create that potential for the business to kind of creep into the residential neighborhood. And to the south of that Fairhope Avenue is all residential. It's R1, rural agricultural, and R2 in that vicinity. And so that's what our concern is, and we recommend a denial for that reason.
Okay. I could answer. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on behalf of the applicant? Is that, Mr. Fogel?
I'm Mike Fogel, and we...
Is this Mike on?
Yes.
I'm Mike Fogel, and we bought this purchase, my parents bought this property back in '02 and built the pond. My father built it. We've been in construction with, in doing site work and that type of business for about 40 years. And when we purchased the property, it was supposed to be just a residential home site. My mother here is 86, and she has been living there. My father passed away in '12. And when they came and did the eminent domain on the corner, it threw the curve in the road, which dumps the traffic coming from downtown Fairhope to Walmart, and it turns to the right going south, are all thrown to our, to our side, and there's no, there's no stopping, there's no let up at all whatsoever. And I've called and talked to the gentleman with the highway about possible speed breakers, police to come out. We've called them several times. They come in. People will slow down for a little while, and then it starts back again. But the problem, too, is the speed limit around that curve's 20. And when they come out of there doing 30 and 40, not letting up, our driveway is directly in line, and it's blinded by the shrubbery and everything around the curve there. And I'm afraid she's going to end up getting killed. And our neighbors, or anybody that comes to visit, has trouble getting in and out. We get some nice gestures and horn blowing a lot from people coming through. And that was the reason I came to the city to ask for some help. And they, my understanding was maybe possibly go to a residential, a light, commercial type of property, like a doctor's office, or something to make it, you know, confide with the area, but not encroach, and in fact, is the way the property lays. We could still own property on the south side. We own, but do something right on that corner, businesslike, that would take in this traffic situation, letting the people come in, coming from Fairhope, turn in onto the Marathon Gas Side, in on the property to the right, and exit on the property going south at the other end of the property, and make it where there would be a zone in there for people, would be safe for everybody. The other thing was maybe possibly the city helped put a driveway in for us to have access to move. We didn't, the gentleman on the other side, I think, had Baldwin County do something for him, but he knew what was going on about the, the traffic, how it was going to be. And we did not have any idea. So that's my story. I don't know what else to tell you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody want to speak to the request to rezone R2 Medium Density to B4 on Fairhope Avenue on the southwest intersection of the roundabout?
Mr. Turner, Chairman, I would like to say that I did receive a call from Ms. Robinson, who lives nearby, and she was not in favor of the request.
If nobody wishes to speak at this time, in that case, I will close the public hearing and turn the item over to the commissioners.
Is it that the traffic has increased because of this roundabout? Because Route 13 is being developed more and more as a major road, where in the past it was really not usually that much. So I'm trying to figure out this impact, whether it comes because of the additional traffic or the roundabout. I personally, I wouldn't have put a roundabout and a gas station together at the same place, because I don't want you looking at the gas price when you're going around a roundabout, but that's me. But I'm just curious, is it more traffic that's causing the problem, or the fact that it's a different geometry coming out of there?
Both. There seems to be a lot more traffic.
Can you come next to the microphone, please?
Both. There seems to be a lot more traffic, especially during schooltimes. The traffic used to back up at the stoplight, at the stop sign, back up down south on, from between Morphy and Fairhope Avenue, used to back up in front of us, which wasn't any big deal, because they had to stop. Now, everybody's hitting the circle, and they don't, nobody stops. They just fly off, and you don't have time to even judge when to pull out of the driveway. And it's the same thing in the morning at work time. You'll have 10 cars fly by, and you just kind of jump out if you have a chance to get out. And then, but even all day long, some reason, a lot of people seem to like it. Guys with hot rods or, you know, loud cars, they love to fly out of that circle and make a lot of noise going around it, like a race car curve, and it kind of makes it a little aggravating, on top of everything else. Plus, we were right there when the shooting hit, when the shooting at the Marathon Station. I was in the front yard, walked around. I mean, I was in the backyard and heard the shooting, and I walk out, and this guy's laying dead in the drive, right across the street. My mom was inside. I told her to stay in the house and don't come out, and I went out, and they were over there, the officers had him laying in the ditch, rolling him around, and, you know, it just wasn't like the old way it used to be. Four stop, you know, stop signs, two stop signs, and everybody had to slow down to ease through the area.
I have a question. You currently, the 2.84 acres, is that all the land that you have at that location?
We had, yes, it was 3.18, but the eminent domain took the corner to get us below three acres.
Ken, if they wanted to come under a PUD application, not, they don't have the full three acres, but they had it prior to the eminent domain, would that possibly be any kind of a hardship, or would we have the ability to approve a PUD, or would that just be a closed door?
I would look at that before I gave a definitive answer, of course. Might turn on how the county acquired. I acquired that land for the county. I do the county's condemnation work. If they retain the underlying fee, so that they might still have the underlying fee in the part that was turned into right of way, then that might be an argument to get them up to the three acres. I would need to look into that.
I would just, you know, our PUD ordinance allows, is a rezoning that allows, if you have over three acres, to bring in a proposal and show what that proposal is. I just, the, you know, I understand, you know, everything you're saying, I can't disagree with anything, but then, you know, from our perspective, you take an area that you say is, you know, there's a concern about driving, and take it from a residential house with one car to, you know, business with 100 cars coming in and out with all that traffic. It's, you know, for the safety aspect, it's kind of a counterintuitive for the overall.
Well, the location of the drive would make a lot of difference.
That's why I was saying, you know, with a PUD, a PUD is a specific zoning, where then, you know, we rezone it, and we don't know, somebody's going to come in and hack it up or do a good job on it, where if it's a PUD, we know exactly what would be done. But again, a PUD, you have to have three acres to present, and that would be something that I would, you know, be a lot more...
Another thing that's been brought up by Nancy is the fact that my father built that pond, and it was built in '02, and there was just a little stream running through there. Now, that falls under, what is it?
Well, there's concern, I talked to the building official about this, and his concern is it's going to be very expensive to develop that property, simply because that pond is really deep, and it's going to be a challenge site, is one of the concerns. That doesn't affect the zoning side of things, but, but, well, it doesn't affect the zoning side of it, but it does affect, you know, considerations for future PUDs or whatever at that location. I did talk to Wayne about the PUD, and he did not, he didn't really say no, but he said you have to have, per our ordinance, you have to have three acres to go that direction. So, and I did talk to, also, the building official, mentioned that they did work with the homeowners on the driveways at one point in time, and that, he said that they didn't, y'all didn't want the driveway changed. So...
No, no, that's not true.
Okay, I just, I'm, like I said, okay.
Well, I'm telling you.
Yes, but that, that was kind of the issue of the driveway, so.
Mr. Fogel? It's been a while. I just don't remember. My recollection is we only had to condemn one of those quadrants. Did you recall whether you, whether you were that one, or did you convey that property by deed to the county?
I don't know. I think you met with him.
You met with my brother Eddie, who lives on Gafer. At the time, when this was taking place, I was basically living in Birmingham.
I think we bought that by deed, which would mean we took fee simple title. And we might have taken fee simple title if we condemned it. The county usually does.
Okay.
Which would mean there would be under the three acres. More like, more than like, I mean, I don't, can't give you definitive answer, but more likely than not, they're going to be under the three acres.
If that's something, if that's something you all want to pursue, we can always, if he was willing to table it, that's something that perhaps we could research from Ken's side, that's...
I wanted to say about the pond area and the watershed, there was a small swamp, that was basically a swamp area and a creek running through it. And my father took it upon himself, back then, there weren't as many rules and regulations. And he hired somebody to come in and dig the pond, and we had built lakes up in Birmingham, a 23 and a 20-acre lake we built up there. And the fall from the road, where the water comes under the road at the gas station, to the far end of the property that where Crittendon lives, is the old creek bed still lays, is still there. And judging, just looking at it, you're probably looking at about six feet of fall across that 400 feet that you're talking about. So it's not like it's going to, if you, if you opened the dam back up and put it back the way it used to be, it wouldn't be, you know, I'm just saying, in a commercial aspect, the gas station across the street just stuck pipes in the ground and covered them up, dumped it over on us, and we could continue the pipes right on down, you know, if you wanted, if you, if that was a problem watershed-wise, is all I'm saying, as far as that goes.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, before you, before you go. The, when they put the roundabout in, I'm just trying to understand this a little bit better, but when they put the roundabout in, the driveway, as I see it on this picture right here, is accurate. That's right?
Yes.
So, when they put the roundabout in, you still can't get out of this driveway on, on, on 13?
No, it, that's, but it, what happens is, when they cut the new right of way to make the circle coming off Fairhope Avenue, they took the front of the property off, of our property there, they took the front, and made that a sharp right turn. And right at the end of the right turn is where the, they stopped, and it straightens up to head down 13 to Morphy. And that's where they come around that curve, and you don't even have any straight view. I mean, they're just basically flying around the corner, and you can't see out or you can't...
The photographs we've got don't, they were taken pre, pre-circle construction. So, I mean, we can't really see the way that fits in here. But you're saying your driveway is on a curve?
It is at the tip, the tip of the curve. They stopped when they put the right of way, they restaked the right of way and put a curve in the property.
Right.
One of the, one of the new stakes is right at one side of the driveway, and on the other side of the driveway, you're starting to straighten back up and run straight south towards Morphy. And there's two pins in the ground right there that are new right of way stakes that they put in.
If your driveway was moved further south, would that eliminate the problem?
Yes, it would help a lot, yes.
Okay.
That's what I originally had hoped, and, you know, we're not...
Certainly, I, I don't, I don't see where, I'm very familiar with that roundabout, but I'm don't, I don't see where the roundabout is in relationship to your driveway because of this photograph, but it seems to me that there certainly is room to, your driveway would be, have to be reconfigured somewhat.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
But it seems to me that you could move it further south and solve the problem associated with, with, with traffic right there.
Correct.
Okay.
I did try on page three, you'll see, I tried to get a photograph that, I mean, it's not the best, but I tried to get one that kind of provides a reference of distance. There is a good bit of distance there.
Yeah, it's like 200 feet of property frontage below the driveway now, 200 feet down the road, and...
It's still yours?
Yes, sir, but what it is, let me explain that, too. There are two parcels there.
Right.
When my father bought the property back in '02, the south end, there's 186 feet that is like a little half-acre parcel.
Right.
But we own it. We owned it, we've owned it since '02. I own it all now. I bought it from, in purchasing it from my mother, and I own all of it. So I could work any way I needed to, in order, you know, as far as, there wouldn't be any discrepancies in any property lines or anything, as far as, you know, having trouble legally doing this, if we just all could get together and do it, you know?
Not, don't go away, but who is, which highway department is it that we would, it would be responsible?
Baldwin County.
Excuse me?
Baldwin County.
Baldwin County.
I think they did, needed that to the city. That section of 13, I think, has been deeded to the city.
So that's a yes? Y'all, you?
I think the city paved it, just, didn't you?
Oh, it would be rich. Don't hide down there behind the chair. If you've got something to add, come on up here.
Up to Mosley Road, if my recollection is correct.
I believe that's right. Thought you could sneak down there, couldn't you?
And I'm not going to attest to who said or did what, but the standard procedure on all the roundabouts, the two that I have been involved with, the two that have been done so far, was that the offer always was, that all the property owners, they would relocate and build a new driveway apron, and in this case, they did it on two of the four quadrants, so that it pushes that entrance as far away from the tangent of the roundabout for safety purposes. I was told by the county engineer that this property owner did not want that, and declined that opportunity to have that, that apron reestablished as far away from the tangent of the roundabout as possible. Now, I'm not going to say that that is the absolute truth or whatever, but that was what was conveyed to me.
Let's just leave it at that, that's sort of just out there, but, but in this situation, is 13 of the city's responsibility now?
That is correct.
Okay, so if, if, if the city wanted to work with Mr. Fogel, maybe y'all could figure something out? Have?
That's always a possibility, but I understand is our, our role would have to end at the right of way line, meaning that we'd have no issue with establishing a new apron as far south of the terminus or the, the tangent of that roundabout into his property, but our construction and work would end at his property line, and then he would be responsible for picking up the driveway and taking it from wherever, to connect it back to the existing ones.
But probably where, where you come off of the highway, off of 13, certainly the, I'm sure there'd probably be a culvert that would need to be installed there, maybe?
I don't, I don't think, it's, it's flat as a pancake there, I think, so...
Flat as a pancake, well, and pancakes you'd have to put in there would...
What, they did re, when they did the, did this, the cul-de-sac or circle, they did take out my mother's pipes on her driveway and re-poured that section, because of, for some reason. I don't know what that superintendent you had out there.
The county was over that job, so that wasn't, that wasn't us, so...
Oh, you, are you?
No.
You city?
Richard's with the city.
Oh, okay, I got you, okay. Yeah, all right, what it was, when they, when they came around the curve, they kept, they approached us and said, we are going to have to replace these pipes on my, on my mother's driveway. And they did tear them out, did some dirt digging of the ditch, because it's really a deep ditch now, around the, around towards the Marathon Station. That's turned into a, you have to hand weed eat it, where it used to be, we could mow it. That's how deep they dug it around. But anyway, that let the water fall from her driveway back around the pond and going into the pond and on around... into the pond and on around that way. So, but what they did, it was, it was cut, and there was work done at that time to the driveway.
Okay.
We're getting a little bit down a rabbit trail. Our discussion's not how to get them safely in or out of the driveway, or how do we do their driveway. Our question is, does this property need to be changed from R2 medium density to be for basically business and office?
Just for us to be sure that we realize that in a year or so, we're going to have another school on Fairhope Avenue that's going to be more traffic as well, so just keep that in mind.
I wanted to speak to the zoning. I mean, I, well, I can see that things have changed, and I understand how the traffic issue, the zoning, like you said, seems like a counterintuitive way to address it, to introduce more traffic or more, you know, occupants into the property, especially as it's divided into two properties, you know, where you're not solving the traffic issue. So I appreciate looking for an alternative to rezoning, you know, whether it's the city working with the driveway or some other mechanism to kind of solve the problem. Rezoning seems like it might open a can of worms and the domino effect, then your neighbors will be here next saying, "Well," because that happened, now we want to do, yeah.
I've been approached already by the person catty-corner across, and I said, "I don't think you're even in the city, so you won't have to worry." And he, "Oh, that's good, that's good to know," and he left.
Oh, gosh.
Okay.
I mean, I think if you have more traffic, you have people that live in places that don't want more traffic where they live, and businesses seem to like to be located where there's more traffic. And I think, there's a place that we zoned commercial just across from Highway 27 Grill that was as far away from the node of 181 and Fairhope Avenue as this is from 181 and Fairhope Avenue. I mean, I can see business being in appropriate use here. I mean, I, you know, I'm no planner, and I, you know, don't, everybody don't shoot me, and I'm just the messenger of, you know, I see residential people complaining because we're putting commercial on Granada Road that we think should be commercial. I mean, I, so...
One thing I want to...
Now you've got residential people that want to make commercial, and we're not wanting them to do that.
I think one of Wayne's concerns was that there's a clear line of delineation. To the north is the natural direction for that growth to go, because it is unzoned, and it's, but from the south, you have a whole lot of residential, so it's a pretty residential block.
And if you're going to buffer residential from commercial to B4 designation is, I mean, it's not a gas station, it's not a drive-in restaurant, I mean, you know. If you want to buffer, and I don't know, here again, I'm no planner, I don't know how that should work, but I see that as a natural transition to what's there almost.
Would, part of the concern too is that they're two properties, so if you rezone them both, there's no, you know, there's no guarantee that you're not going to have the driveway in the same place that it is now.
The driveway, let's forget about.
Okay.
Driveway's got nothing to do with rezoning. This property be redeveloped, this zoning, another zoning, or whatever, they can move the driveway if they want to. If they've got an issue with the driveway and the safety, they can move the driveway. That's all the rabbit trail we're talking about, whether this should be B4 or not.
I see the proximity to the cul-de-sac is detriment for the zoning because of their two properties, which leads to a driveway, but it's not just one.
Misses, any further questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I made a motion before that wasn't seconded, so I'll make a motion, we recommend to the council to approve the B4 zoning.
Do I have a second? Motion Dice, we're lucky with second, do I have any other motions?
Yeah, I would make a motion. I'd make a motion, and certainly I think there's an alternative, at least at this juncture, for leaving this area south of Fairhope Avenue residential, but helping Mr. Fogel with his driveway if at all possible. But I would make a recommendation to, or I would make a motion to recommend to the city council denial of the change to a B4 zoning designation.
I have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right. Got that anyway? Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, the city council, the only ones that, as Chairman adequately stated earlier, the only ones that can change the zoning, so you can certainly talk to them, and we just make a recommendation.
And Chairman Commissioners, the next item we have for you is a zoning change, and this is case number ZC 18.14, Zulu Charlie 18.14. This property is located on 51 South Church Street, and you'll see the property called out both in your packet as well as in the left-hand zoning map on your slide. You'll also see the aerial image on your right. You notice this is the intersection of Church Street and Delamar. This does fall within the Central Business District. And Commissioners, forgive me if I stumble through this item just a moment, because I may not have every single point that Mr. Dice wanted to share with you, but if you notice here, the zoning change request is to change from B1 Local Shopping District to B2 General Business District. And what I'd like to do for the commission's benefit and also for our audience, is I want to read an item out of your packet. If you look at page two of your packet, and it has both the B1 and the B2 descriptions in your packet, but it also has some of Wayne's commentary, so what I'd like to do is read to you, this summarizes the request much better than I could stumbling through the, stumbling through the slides. But if you notice, the purpose of requested B2 is, and it gives you the definition of B2. Notice Wayne's commentary underneath there. The applicant stated in a meeting with staff that the intended development goal for that property was to allow the historic home to remain, the home that you see in the aerial image right there, and we'll show you some photo, there's also a photo of that home on this slide right here. Intended development goal for the property is to allow the historic home to remain, but to allow for a restaurant-bar use in the structure. The exterior and historical character would be unchanged with only interior renovations and a change in use. Currently, B1 zoning allows, only allows a restaurant through an appeal through the zoning board of adjustments, but a bar as a primary use is not allowed in B1 under any circumstances. So a restaurant with an accessory bar is allowed in B2 district by right, but an accessory bar is considered part of a restaurant. A bar as a primary use is defined as a business-serving alcoholic beverage which may be include accessory food and entertainment services. So therefore, for the intended and desired development of this piece of property, the applicant's requesting that it be rezoned from B1 to B2, so that way, the uses associated with B2 would be allowed by right on the property. And if you'll notice in the zoning map, this is consistent with the nearby, because a good portion of this area is zoned B2, and is a consistent zoning request and a logical progression of this area. If you look at the various restaurant-bar uses nearby the area, Chairman Commissioners, the, you notice some ground-level, street-level photos on this particular slide, again, the historic nature of the structure. It is, if memory serves correct, it's not an historic structure, it's a contributing structure.
If I could throw an example there real quickly.
Yes, sir.
I was stunned when I saw this on the agenda, that that wasn't B2. I thought it was B2 all the way down to the...
Yes, sir.
To the park, and I've got no problem with this being B2.
Yes, sir.
I think that whole area could be rezoned B2 and clean the map up, but I think we need to quit talking about the existing structure, because they could come in and bulldoze that tomorrow. And so I want everybody here to understand, we approve this, hold hands and say kumbaya, so they can save this beautiful existing structure, and the day after we do it, they can bulldoze it and do whatever fits into B2. So don't go for the...
With whichever zoning.
So don't go for the existing structure, decide whether B2 makes more sense than B1, because whether this developer or the next one, there's no deed restriction, there's no historic restriction, this thing, you know, if they get in there and it's got termites and the builder says, "Hey, this thing's going to cost more to renovate than to start new," it's gone.
I've got a question for you. I got involved in a lawsuit like this some years back in New Orleans. How do you define an accessory bar? And is it a bar that only serves during the time that the restaurant is serving food? Or does it become a bar that's separate and stays on way after? I mean, we got into that, and I don't know how your regulations, I would have looked this up beforehand, it just occurred to me I should ask this question.
And so, Emily, could you illuminate what you were mentioning just a moment ago? And she knows it much better than I do off the top of her head.
The business license application is based on a percentage of sales, is how it's listed with the city.
So is Dragonfly and Flybar an example of an accessory bar across the street?
I don't know how their business license is listed.
I don't think the Dragonfly, just off the cuff, would be an accessory bar, and then the Flybar would be an actual bar itself.
The Flybar serves food, you can eat at it, so I don't know.
But the percentages would be real low, I would think, compared to the other.
And Mr. Chairman, thank you for that, and I stumbled, I stumbled across it, but as you were stating, this is a contributing structure, not an historic structure.
Right. Well, my issue is just, I don't even know why we even talk about the structure being there, because there's nothing, I mean, we're talking about, that to me is, again, I keep using the word rabbit trail today, we're talking about, do we want to zone this from B1 to B2, and I don't give a damn about that structure, because there's nothing guaranteeing that structure's there, so even showing the structure, it just to me is, is something, I mean, I, you know, I can, we can, I can point to thirty brand-new buildings, most of which look very nice, that where we approve zoning changes, where the structure that we approved the zoning change for is no longer there. And I can take care of anybody who wants to ride with me and go on a field trip afterwards, I'll point them out. But anyway, my point is simply, B1 to B2, let's forget about the structure.
Yes, sir. And so Chairman, what I'll conclude with is that the applicant as well as the engineer of record representing the applicant, they are here as well for questions, if I can't answer anymore.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have questions for Buford while he's up?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Buford, if it doesn't matter, why do we put it in there about preserving historic, since we don't have any kind of historic preservation? Why are we...
And Ms. McKeller, I think probably, when Wayne was preparing the item, he felt that was a relevant and appropriate background-supporting information. We try to, when we write these agenda items, we try to anticipate all the questions and be able to answer your questions and be able to put it on the screen, and he felt that was relevant. To make certain, as Mr. Turner was saying, that we at least illuminate, because the question will be asked, it has a Baldwin County plaque on the front of the building, what does that mean? So he felt compelled to illuminate that.
So if Wayne feels that it is something of importance, is it something that we need to move forward with in the future, preserving some kind of historic preservation, some architectural committee that we do not have?
That is an excellent question. That is an outstanding question, and probably a good topic for a future work session.
I know, we keep saying the future, but, I mean, we need to put it on a deadline, so it's not two years from here, and we have no historic preservation of anything to preserve anymore. So, not that it's important to anybody else, maybe, but...
Yes, ma'am.
You know, he seems, he is our city planner, I look to him for guidance. If he sees that this is something that is of importance to put in what's presented to us, I would like to kind of look into that a little bit more.
So, no.
Thank you.
So, no, thank you.
Buford, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, just to speak to the, well, yeah, I also, you know, love historic buildings, but appreciate, I think, I think what you're trying to say is that that's muddying the waters, because if we, if we, if we don't think purely about the zoning, but we think about the beautiful structure and make our decision based on that, they can still do whatever they want.
I think it's very nice to know.
It can be manipulative.
I think it's nice to know the background and the motivation of what they're doing, and it's nice, but I just want everybody to know...
To be clear.
In the real world, and we do have a historic preservation and, you know, ordinance, and it's very loose. I remember we've talked about historic preservation of Fairhope numerous times, and one issue is we don't have a, you know, Mike could give us a seminar on this, but we don't have a set architecture. We've got, you know, some of the Dyson Spanish buildings that came in, some of the Iowa buildings from the first single taxers, but there's not a set architecture that we can define as this is Fairhope, like you would have in San Augustine or some of these, you know, Santa Fe and some other places. And whenever we've talked about historic preservation, I'll get calls saying, you know, "Your parents will never be able to repaint the Pittman Building if historic preservation comes in," and it gets very, very, very contentious very quickly, because people with buildings like this get concerned about, "Well, gosh, you know, this building might generate X thousand dollars a month rent on this property. If I bulldoze it and put an eight thousand square foot building there, it'll generate four or five times that." So people start getting real nervous, but there is a pretty loosey-goosey historic preservation.
And I didn't mean to go back down the rabbit hole, I just, I couldn't resist saying something about, and there are good incentives that might be another way to get there, the incentives. I had a question about the zoning, as you mentioned how muddy the zoning is, I was surprised to see that the whole Church Street was R2, and there's restaurants there, you know, I'm curious, what do we do about, we've got restaurants and ends in the B1, and then we've got a bunch of restaurants in the mixed-use development. You know, I also don't have any problem with a zoning change, but I just look at everything else around it that's non-compliant and wonder how do we get to a point where it's very clear what is allowed in each kind of zoning?
Restaurant's on R2, that's the school property there.
Okay, that's not...
Yes, if you look southwest...
The restaurant stops at that road, it's the pink up above is the two-story multi-use Cory building.
Okay, the pink up above, okay.
Exactly. So the K1 Center...
So then it's just the Fairhope Inn and all of that?
Yes, ma'am.
That's not quite, okay.
Yes, the bright red you see in your zoning map right there. And Commissioners, you know, obviously, we are, your staff is synthesizing a great deal of information right now, among those items, the visual preference study, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I certainly expect that you'll continue to see continued future recommendations for enhancements and changes to the zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations, et cetera, as a natural progression, as we're evaluating this and our whole constellation of issues, have two issues, two issues for discussion today about possible changes. So we certainly hear the mandate, we certainly understand it, and that's, these recommendations you're seeing are part of that, and all of these are fantastic, fantastic pieces of feedback that are duly noted, that we will certainly synthesize into some kind of recommendation into the future.
Thank you, Buford. Would anybody like to speak on behalf of the applicant in this case?
Yes, my name's Larry Smith, I'm a civil engineer for the project. Just want to clarify, make sure everybody understands, we are obviously on the corner there, currently it's B1, all the red below is B1, and the peach pink is B2, that surrounds us on three sides. And so we're just looking to come into compliance with the zoning or be more conforming with the zoning that surround us and the uses that are around us. And I won't get into any historic...
Any questions for Larry while he's here? If not, I will open the public hearing at this time. Anybody wish to speak to this item?
My name's John Pathay, and I'm for rezoning it to B2. And mostly the people that do historic stuff is mainly for cause of taxes. They're trying to save on their taxes, on their colony rent, so that's the main purpose. Most people get a plaque for historical stuff.
It cuts your taxes in half if you get a historic plaque, by the way. Yes, sir.
Regarding the historic nature of the property, it is located within an historic district. The downtown district is an historic district on the National Register of Historic Places.
Correct.
That's another angle on the... That's another angle on the need to think about historic preservation.
Well, the, we passed a historic ordinance back when it, so people could get funding for doing historic renovations and also for a, for a grant that the City of Fairhope got back probably eight, nine years ago. And I haven't looked at the historic, I haven't looked at that in so long, I can't even remember what it says now. But I remember it was done pretty loosely because there was a lot of animosity and a lot of distrust when, when we were looking at that.
I'm not aware of that, the existence of such an ordinance.
Well, that's what you're talking about, what created that, what created that historic district. That's the ordinance I'm discussing. I'll talk to you after the meeting about it. But, but that's what created that historic district and a couple of others. It's not a real in-depth ordinance at all. Matt could explain a lot of it to us. I'll go ahead and...
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say that the owner of Gene Spine's property also spoke with me today, and they are in favor of the rezoning. And they're direct, no, there's a parcel in between them?
Next door.
Next door? They're directly adjacent to this property.
Thank you. All right. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time and turn this meeting over to the Commissioners. You know, my only comment would be, just interjection real quickly, you know, we always say, well, what if the property next door wanted to do the same thing? And my argument would be, I would say, yes, 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 all the way down to the Fairhope Inn, which would take us to the park, which would be a natural place to stop. I don't see any problem with that entire strip being B2. It's all in the business, Central Business District. And I was surprised at what it was when the, when I saw this in my agenda on Friday.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, case number ZC 18.14. I would move that we recommend approval to the City Council.
Do I have a second? I have a second. Any further discussion?
I just, I don't have any problem with there's a bar right across the street and there's the same kind of complexes all up and down the road. I just wonder why we have so many restrictions in uses in a central business district and we don't change the allowable uses within a central business district to include some of the stuff that's obviously supposed to be there.
Well, that's, that's why I think it would be, be nice to change that whole zoning to B2. I agree. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion for the recommendation to City Council is unanimous. Next item on the agenda, a request of John Bethay on behalf of Bethay LLC for a site plan review for Founder Square.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Mike Jeffries, planning technician for the City of Fairhope. What we have before you today is a site plan review for Founder Square, case number 18.06. The owner and applicant, John Bethay, is here with us today to answer any questions. And he's on behalf of Bethay LLC, and he's working with architect Mike Lebatar on the proposed project. The application is as a modification to an existing site plan called Founder Square, which was originally developed by Mike Bernhardt and approved by the Planning Commission December 4th, 2006, and approved by the City Council January 22nd of 2007. The original development had three total phases. Phase 1 and Phase 2 were both completed. Phase 3 had all the infrastructure installed, but nothing further than that, and is set vacant since then. The requested modifications are to the, are to this incomplete Phase 3, which is about .2 acres, and they are considered substantial in regards to Fairhope zoning ordinance, but exceed those which could be approved administratively pursuant to Fairhope zoning ordinance, Article 2.1.2.2. Therefore, this site plan modification is being presented for approval pursuant to the original procedure required by Fairhope zoning ordinance, Article 2.1.2. Planning Commission, as you know, will make review and make a recommendation to the City Council, who will make the final decision. Halfway on the screen now is just very similar to what you just saw as far as maps go. This is just right around the corner, off of Section Street here. You have your zoning map on the left and the aerial on the right side of your screen. It's sites located on the west side of South Section Street, approximately 400 feet north of the intersection of Morphe Avenue and Second Street there. The proposed amendment would allow the development of two buildings which mirror each other. They're both two stories with a breezeway connecting the two on the second floor. They're separated by a common wall that won't have direct access to each other. Each of these buildings contains three units. The bottom floors will each have two commercial units, with the second floors each having one residential unit. The common area in between them will remain, which will connect the first two phases to Second Street between the buildings. Here on the screen, I have what was the existing approved site plan next to the proposed site plan. And really, the general layout is just about the same. On the left side, highlighted in purple, are the commercial uses that were to be there. And in yellow is the residential uses. And on the left, what was approved before was actually five separate lots. And Mr. Bethay has replatted it into two lots, so that way his two buildings won't be encroaching over any lot lines or anything. In that common area in the middle, where the breezeway will be, will have a fire-rated wall per fire, the fire code. And we spoke with Eric Cortina, the building official, about that and went over the particulars on what would be needed to do to make that work for us. Here's just a second picture, kind of showing the outline and general layout of the two different buildings, one on the north and one on the south. And in the middle, you can't see them, this picture is where that breezeway would be. And in front of it on Section Street is a required eight-foot sidewalk. Next picture is kind of, is a front elevation view, give you what it would look like from Section Street, looking at it. It's well underneath the height restrictions that are currently in the CBD. And like I said, the development has the same proposed use and general configuration as the previously approved site plan. The biggest significant change is the reduction of the number of residential units from four to two, or, yeah, from four to two, and the number of parking spaces from eight to two. Now, the eight spaces that were in the original site plan was double that of what was required for their site plan. And the two spaces that are proposed meet the parking requirements right now. SaaS recommendation is to approve with the following conditions: A hold harmless agreement shall be signed and recorded for a balcony overhang that's onto the city property, and the balcony must contain lighting for the sidewalks. And with that, back on the view, you can kind of tell there's, there are balconies that will come over the sidewalk, just a little stoop that come over there, which is allowed in the Central Business District. And that's where the hold harmless agreement comes into play. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for the staff? Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Bethay is here to answer any questions. He should have them.
Thank you. Just for the people that are here, in most municipalities, all that I know of, these plans don't go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They simply go to the Building Department directly. In Fairhope, we have this just so people can look at and see what's going on. This is not a public hearing, but would anybody wish to speak to this item? If not, Commissioners, John is in the audience. If you have any specific questions for him, and Mike is here as well.
I was curious, just because the, I'm looking at more of the site plan, but is there any residential on the ground floor? Is there just sort of an entry, you just go straight up? Okay, residential on second floor. And the entrance is sort of back in that inside corner. Okay. Really nice.
Any other questions, concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, Mr. Chairman?
I've got a motion to approve the staff recommendations with conditions. The only conditions are basically just housekeeping, a hold harmless agreement for the balcony overhang, the balcony must contain lighting, and the sidewalk would be eight foot in width, which is nice when the Mardi Gras goes by. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. Motion to recommend passes unanimously. All right. Under Old Business, we do have two items. Correct, Buford?
Yes, sir. Chairman, Commissioners, we do have one more zoning change case before you. And this is case ZC 18.15.
That was Richard's, so I was trying to skip it. I circled the wrong one on that. Yes, that is absolutely correct. Excuse me, I skipped over to the second page.
Yes, sir. So ZC Zula Charlie 18.15 zoning ordinance amendment. And Chairman, Commissioners, we passed out prior to the meeting a copy of Table 3-1, which is the use table. This is directly from the zoning ordinance. And I'll, I'll ask Mr. Peterson to help us with the particulars on this. But before we do that, what I'd like to point out, if you look, if you look at your use table, and if you look at the, your far-left column, the left side, you'll notice you have your dwelling, and then you have civic. If you go to the last line of the civic section, you'll notice one of those uses is a public utility. And if you, if you follow across going left to right, all of the items marked with a circle are permitted only on appeal and subject to special conditions. And you'll notice that that is consistent all the way across for any item marked public utility, with the exception of R6. If you look at zoning district R6, which is a mobile home park district, don't know the history on it, Chairman, Commissioners. I won't confess to know the history on it, but it was not included as an allowable use. And so the request is, is to add that...
Actually, in all uses?
All uses. Make this, so the request, the, the request is to make that in all uses. So you notice an R6, the R3TH, the R3PGH, and so forth. And so with that, I'll ask Mr. Peterson to illuminate the details.
Yeah. And the background of that is, you know, we're trying to install new lift, or substations within the city and upgrading some and relocating some. And some of the properties that are available happen to be in a, in the M6 Mobile Home District that's on the corner of, the northwest corner of Young and Nichols. And, which is right across the street from where the existing substation is. But anyway, so anyway, we're trying to get all our details established on getting the proper permissions that I talked to Wayne about. Was there any kind of use on appeal or any other kind of requirement we needed to do with the Planning Commission in order to relocate this substation? And it turns out that there, there's parts of the zoning ordinance wouldn't allow us to put a substation on that property. And what, you know, what, what I'm trying to accomplish is to put substations where, you know, it's not an issue of land use where you put critical infrastructure in terms of utility. Sometimes it's a geographical decision, and sometimes it's an infrastructure condition within itself that dictates where these things go. And none of those things have to do with the particular allowable usage based on a zone. So I, I just thought it would be appropriate to allow utility infrastructure to be installed in any zone, you know, with a use on appeal being approved by the Planning Commission to at least understand the circumstance by which that infrastructure's going to be, you know, required. And so, you know, I obviously think that we should amend the zoning ordinance, or at least recommend to the council that we amend it, so that we do have that availability of sites that lend themselves to an economic opportunity for putting in infrastructure, utility, you know, related infrastructure.
Well, Richard and Richard, with y'all's past experience at other municipalities, this is kind of unusual, what we have here, that it's not allowed in all of the zonings, isn't it?
I, I don't know that I've ever seen a zoning ordinance that accepted any utility infrastructure from a zone. It seems to me like all of them have been always on use on appeal. But now, and I say that, we've got, you know, subdivisions with different types of infrastructure, whether it be lift stations or the primary, you know, types of infrastructure you see. And, you know, they're pretty much wherever they're dictated based on the geography of the land, which is a topography, you know, and toward the bottom of the hill. And, and, you know, we try to blend into what we can with the surrounding area where, you know, these infrastructure requirements are. And I don't know that it should be dictated based on the land use as much as the requirement for the utility to, to have the infrastructure where the infrastructure needs to be.
Absolutely. And, and by the way, it would not go to the Planning and Zoning, it would go to the Board of Adjustments. And we probably in the future should look at that because it seems like it would go to the Planning and Zoning because it would be more along the lines of the, you know, the subdivisions and the, you know, subdivision layouts and the, and the zoning itself than, you know, when you think of the Board of Adjustments, you think of special appeals for special circumstances. And I don't think of lift stations and things like that. I think of that more along the lines of an 115211 kind of review. And I wonder, maybe, you know, asking around, seeing in other municipalities, whether those go to Board of Adjustments as a special appeal, or whether they're more like 115211 review that we do.
I don't know. But anyway. Is there any reference in the statutes about how to approve infrastructure?
Because usually thinking of the Board of Adjustments is making special exceptions, you know. But, but anyway, I'll go ahead, that's, that's a discussion for another day. We need to get this done now. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody wish to speak to ZC 1815? Yes, sir.
I just have a concern about fully understanding the risks and nuisance characteristics of certain public utility equipment, devices, stations, and so on. Is that all clearly understood by everyone involved in considering approving, implementing such things in these various zoning districts?
It's a good question. Yeah, I think it's odd that it's just a few zoning that's left out of. It's like if you're going to leave it, if it's in, you know, why is it in B2 but not B4? Why is it in R4 and not R6? R5 and R6? It doesn't make any sense. Why it would be allowed in an apartment but not a mobile home park, or a, you know, B2 and not a B4? I, I can't answer your question about what all we understand, but it's just counterintuitive. It just looks like somebody took a magic marker and kind of put some random circles down. And I can't understand why they wouldn't allow it upon appeal. The reason it goes upon appeal is exactly what you said. So, you know, somebody says, gosh, do we want, you know, a utility substation right next door to a playground for kids? But I think Richard would probably not do that anyway.
And that's, that's why I think the purpose of the appeal is...
That's why there is an appeal in there.
The purpose of the appeal is for the people who are, you know, charged with making that decision to understand, you know, what, what the facility would do to the landscape around it and how they buffer it from the uses around. I think that's exactly right.
And I think a bigger question to the appeal is, why can you appeal for R4 and not R6? Or why can you make appeal to B2 and not B4?
Well, it says right on, on the front page of, of the memo, appeals reviewed, in this case, by the Zoning Board of Adjustment, are viewed against the following criteria. And you've got six or eight, 10 of them that are listed here. And one of them at the very end, impacts on adjacent property, including noise, traffic, visible intrusions, potential physical impacts, and property values. So, I mean, it's kind of a, kind of a catch-all in terms of how I would anticipate Richard and, and his crowd would, would factor in those issues.
It's a, it's a catch-all, but it seems pretty loose. And I realize this is a little rabbit hole here. Because it, it, to me, it begs the question, I think it's reasonable that it should, the way it currently is seems unreasonable. And it's reasonable that we get a little more consistent in it being allowed. I'd like to have a clearer process and clearer design standards. I mean, it seems like a mark of really nice cities is that the infrastructure isn't intrusive. And when it does exist, it's not, it's, it's beautiful. You know, it's not glaringly ugly. And, you know, you go, I mean, one example, very expensive example, but you go to New Orleans and there's these beautiful brick buildings that have pump stations in them. And I think we should sort of strive in that direction. And I'd like to know how we can get there with maybe more specific language or specific design standards for this infrastructure.
And Chairman, Commissioners, just to reiterate for, for our audience, both here and watching too, is to understand that the, the Board of Adjustments process is a public hearing, just like we consider zoning changes, subdivisions, et cetera. We go... We go through the same type of meeting, just heard by a different board, heard by a different board, appointed. And so therefore, in this case, you'd have city staff, they would have to make their case and make their justification to that board. And so that board would have the authority to approve, deny, table, add conditions of approval, et cetera. So, though not necessarily, as Ms. Bryan is saying, a standard at this point, but there would definitely be a vetting process, and heard by an external board, where you would have a public hearing. So the public can understand, they at least have that opportunity to have advertisement. If a piece of infrastructure is going in a particular area, they have the opportunity to make comments about that infrastructure, and let that, let that board consider the case.
And ask for buffering, or ask to make it more attractive. Is, really, that was, there was a question buried in that whole thing, is there something I'm missing? You know, in discussions, I've heard about lift stations, it's been, you know, here's a paint color, and here's a, here's a screen or a fence. Is that, is there anything else we have?
I think, you know, we're going through the replacement of the lift station at the bottom of Fells Avenue on Mobile Street. And I, you know, everybody has their own opinion about what looks attractive and what doesn't. But in the process of talking about all the different options, which some, you know, had some type of artist, you know how the I-10, when you get into Pensacola, has the Blue Angels on the, on the, you know, we talked about trying to build some type of solid-looking wall with some type of, you know, artwork, if you will, that's debatable too, but, you know, and then we started looking at, well, the view of the bay is sometimes more important, so now we're looking at more of a low-profile picket fence to put around it. But we're trying to take the low-profile picket fence and create some offsets in it, so that the electrical equipment can fit within that offset in the landscape and can kind of be around it, so you really don't see what is above ground of that lift station. So to answer your question, every site kind of has its own requirements for what constitutes blending into the surrounding area. And I think our goal is to try to do the best we can to accomplish that. I, you know, but I think it's just one of these things that with every project, you have to weigh, well, what could we have done better, and try to accomplish that on the next one, if there is something you could have done better. And right now, when we look at the lift station that we're looking at at the bottom of the hill, we're looking at a little more open, you know, a less, you know, obvious structure, because, you know, it points toward utility infrastructure in what we think is a protected bluff along the bay. So that's, you know, I don't know if that answered your question, but we do care and we do try.
Yeah.
And that's what I think is important about being able to represent these things to an entity that, you know, has those considerations to weigh on and judge to approve or not to approve. And I'm happy with that.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion. I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. Now we have two extension requests coming up. Buford?
Yes, sir, and so Commissioners, I'm going to read this into the record. The first request for extension is the case number SD 16.34. This is Old Battles Village, Phase Four. The request is for a two-year extension of the preliminary plat approval.
Emily, have we, in the past, I was talking to Ken before the meeting, and he said there's nothing in the, you know, any of our ordinances or subdivision regs that say we can, or that say we cannot do this. In the past, though, I'm thinking, maybe you or Nancy can remember, haven't we typically done one-year extensions?
Yes, that is correct. It's been one year typically.
That's kind of the precedent that we have set in the past.
Yes, it is.
That's what I was thinking.
But does it preclude two years?
I was just asking about the precedent of what you've done in the past, since this is not in our subdivision ordinance, is that normally we've just gone a year at a time? And I was asking if that would preclude us doing a two-year extension.
There's no provision against granting this extension or expressly authorizing. I think what we're, I think what we're hearing is that the commission has, as a matter of custom or practice in the past, allowed such extensions, based on some kind of showing. From a legal perspective, I don't, I don't see an issue with granting, granting an extension consistent with what we've done in the past.
Well, I think it just begs the issue of starting, starting a precedent that you can't carry forward, and what, and what is it then? Is it, if it's one year, but then is it two years? If it's two, is it four? If we don't have a rule and a reg, then maybe we need one.
I make a motion that we make the extension for a one-year.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion?
No.
Put it for Charles, so we'll see that he was here. Any further? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That was the Old Battles Village. The next item, what is, I don't have the...
And Chairman, Commissioners, case number SD 16.27, Fairhope Falls, Phase Two and Three, same request, two-year extension of the preliminary plat approval.
Okay.
I make the same request for a one-year extension.
Motion for a one-year extension, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, we've got some green space discussion. Buford's got some slides to show us, and he promised he's not going into any math equations today.
No, sir, Commissioners, no, there's no Commissioners, we will, I will save our lecture on compatibility analysis for another time, but I hope to captivate you about that again in the future. Again, apologies for Mr. Dice, and he was hoping to present this to you tonight. I am going to stumble through this as best I can, but we wanted to provide the commission with some, some information to ponder, and to invite, that hopefully it would solicit some feedback about green space. This is a green space and open space, we've talked about this previously. The first slide right here, you'll notice that we contemplated this, and I think Wayne verbalized this to the commission in a previous meeting, as possibly creating a staggered open space requirement. So for example, if you had a development with density of less than two units per acre, make that open space amount 10%. If you had two to four units per acre, 15%. 20%, four to six, more than six units per acre, 25%. Set it at 10% for an MOP. And currently, the current subdivision regulation requirement is 10%. Now, it specifies 10% green space, so our engineers clarify the amount of green space within their various common areas.
Can I run it to you real quick?
Sir?
Why would an MOP have a separate 10% rather than being governed by the density of the MOP, just like everything else?
That is an excellent point. That is an excellent, that's an excellent point of feedback. Now, I think it would depend upon, depend upon the development, because an MOP can span, an MOP can vary in so many different ways. But that's a good point, that is a good point that we'll consider, is either, either, I don't know if we would want to mirror that of a typical subdivision, but possibly create a staggered, a staggered green space requirement similar to a typical subdivision, because I could see that being necessary, for example, if you have an MOP in the CBD, where there is no available space for green space. I could see that possibly being a factor there. So we'll certainly take that under advisement. Just moving on here just a bit, we want to introduce a term into your vernacular of net density and gross density. We mentioned net density on this slide right there, on this slide before you. And so, the, not the subdivision regulations, but the zoning ordinance actually contemplates net density and gross density when it's primarily talking about the village districts, the NVCs, CVCs, and CVCs, which we don't have anyone has zoned any area in Fairhope right now, but it is in the subdivision regulations. And what we're talking about net density is, what would the density be if you removed all the land from a development, with the exception of what is buildable? That would, what would be your net density in that case? It would generate higher density numbers. So we want to introduce that and put that into the vernacular, it's something you'll hear your staff talking about again in the, in the future. Commissioners, I won't, I'll try not to go on ad nauseam, but I do want to put another, another item into your vernacular, and that is your rural to urban transect zones. It's a bit small on your slide, so I apologize for that, but this is something you certainly may want to research on your own. You'll notice your, your transects, beginning with the least dense, the most, the most rural would be a T one, and then going all the way to T six or SD, those would be your urban transects. The transect nomenclature is derived from the new urbanist movement, and is actually based upon the SMART code. And some of you may know, some cities and counties actually adopt SMART code and use it as their governing document. This is derived from that, and this is another way to explain your density transition you hear us talk about, this is another way of describing it. This, the two images on your slide right here, these, this is actually some guidance that is within the zoning ordinance. Typically, we're following the subdivision regulations, but this is an area that we're evaluating for, we're evaluating how it lives within the zoning ordinance. And so you will see that we begin using this guidance for future recommendations. I will confess, we are just now beginning to absorb this information, but it gives plazas, greenways, and again, it's a bit small on your slide, but I just wanted to introduce this into the commission's vernacular. This will be something you will see, we'll synthesize this and make recommendations. One of the things that Wayne commented here on this particular one, is to add some additional columns to actually make some location recommendations for those types of green spaces.
If I can just...
Yes, thank you, Emily.
...interject right here. These, this table is part of the zoning ordinance right now. Wayne is looking at taking that and actually inserting it into the subregs, to use in the subregs, to give guidance on how to use these, and obviously by adding the location on where to use these.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, thank you very much, Emily. That's right. So, I kind of, like I said, I told you, Mr. Turner, I would kind of stumble through this tonight, but you'll see this, you'll see this, so it's very likely you'll see a future recommendation from your staff to, as Emily said, to incorporate this into your subdivision regulations. Wayne included some, some, some nice photos, giving a better example, beginning with a green, and you'll notice here how it's bordered by right-of-way on at least two sides, and the various criteria he included in here. And some additional photos right here, apparently, it looks, looks like one during the wintertime where the grass is frost-killed. Another, another good example here, notice the building facades beyond when you look at street level. An additional example. And another similar one. The, and you'll know, you'll know the one in the lower right-hand corner, a large green right there, bordered with the sidewalk. So I think what you have there is a good opportunity. Another item that we've kind of introduced in the commission's vernacular is passive versus active recreation. So absolutely, a very, an adequate area for some passive recreation, no doubt, right there, that could possibly be used for active recreation. Here, another, another example, the trail greenway, an undeveloped area, continuous linear natural features, often following a stream or a flood plain, 30 feet wide and a minimum of three acres, and then, again, that's right out of the zoning ordinance. A plaza for civic commercial activities bordered by public right-of-way on at least two sides. The building facades define its boundary. Note here, an eighth to two acres, determined by the height surrounding the building, so this is where you would have your height, your height to, to width ratio, as you see right there in that recommendation. A courtyard, a good example in the upper left right there, small open space serving water, a few, one or a few surrounding buildings, bordered by building facades, one side fully or partially bordered by a public right-of-way. And you notice the two, the, the building height ratios included right there. A park, self-explanatory, but a natural area, unstructured recreation, so not necessarily playing fields, that type of thing. May include structured recreation, no more than 25%. I'm sorry, I misspoke there. Featured convenience and, but note the size of at least three acres. And so, commission members, what the, what the desire of your staff is to solicit your comments, which you're welcome to provide to staff, you're welcome to email to Wayne, or you're certainly welcome to email it to me, or Ms. Boyett, or any of your staff. And what we do wish to do is synthesize your comments, your feedback, as well as staff recommendations, synthesize that into a recommendation that we can bring before you on the January 7th Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Buford. Could you, if you could send a copy of this to Jack Burrell, he, whenever he serves on our committee, he's always, you know, questions the green space and the percentages very much.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry he isn't here tonight, but what we will do is, we'll take this meeting's, the entire meeting slideshow, we'll put it into SharePoint, we'll place it into SharePoint where everyone can, where everyone will have access to it, especially this rear portion. And so the council president is certainly shared on that as well.
And I think you did a great job today, Buford, stepping in last minute for Wayne, because when I talked to Wayne at 2:30, he was planning on being here, so you didn't have much time, and I think you did an excellent job. I appreciate that very much.
Thank you, sir. So, I, you know, I make no, I make no excuses, if I, if I intend to stumble through it, I'll warn you in advance.
He did a great job, thank you.
This looks great. I'm really, really excited about this green space.
Yes, ma'am, and I think that, I think the potential to see this appear in MOPs where appropriate will certainly be beneficial. But that's a great suggestion, Commissioners, about possibly having a staggered criteria for MOPs. We certainly, certainly appreciate that comment.
And guys, please look at this in detail, because this is the kind of thing that I think a lot of times we gloss over in meetings, you know, we wish we had it more, and when I say in detail, I mean, both the spirit and then how it's written, you know, kind of, you know, how it's written as far as how it would be implemented. But looks excellent, thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move. I have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.